Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It is at a point in time, and we, it appears that we have a quorum. But before we call this meeting to order, I would like to read the video conference format for this meeting, if that'd be okay with you.
That'll be good, Dave. Alright, I'm not seeing Buzzy on my screen right now.
Well, Buzzy's.
We've got some that aren't showing up.
That's correct. Some of them don't have their audio or their video on. Okay.
Oh, okay. Okay. I didn't have a block or anything for them.
Okay. Uh. I'm gonna go ahead and read that format, Mr. Allen. Alright.
Sounds good.
"In an effort to ensure an orderly meeting this, that is capable of functioning properly and amenable to the public viewing and all participants, the planning commissioners and community act, and the community, all participants except the planning commissioners and community development staff will be muted. If you are calling in by phone, please use the mute feature of your phone after you have entered the conference call. Only the planning commissioners and city staff will be allowed to participate in the meeting unless the chairman recognizes an audience participant to speak pertaining to an item on the agenda. Planning commissioners wishing to be recognized to speak, to make a motion, second, or engage in discussion, debate, or ask to indicate that they want to be recognized in their video feed by raising their hand and waiting to be recognized by the chairman. Once you have been recognized, proceed with your discussion. Please make sure your audio is unmuted before you begin your discussion. After you've finished your discussion, please be sure to put your audio on mute. If you have called in, please make sure to unmute your phone and ask the chairman to recognize you. After you have finished your discussion, please be sure to put your phone back on mute. Please allow the current speaker to finish their discussion before speaking. Hopefully, this will allow for a more orderly meeting. Voting on agenda items will take place through a roll call vote. Audience participants, please ensure that your audio is muted and your video is turned off. If you are calling in by phone, please use the mute feature of your phone after you have entered the conference call. If the chairman requests audience participation, please unmute your audio and turn on your video to be recognized by the chairman. Once recognized by the chairman, please state your name and address and then contribute to the discussion. After discussion, please turn your video off and mute your audio or put your phone on mute. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can call the meeting to order any time.
With that said, we'll call the Thursday, June 4, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to Order and call rolls. Gina?
Mr. Townsend.
Here.
Mr. Poole.
Here.
Ms. Woodard. Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Hollinsworth.
Here.
Ms. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Gregg.
Here.
Mr. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Boyd. We have seven members present, two absent. We do have a quorum.
Alright, is there a motion for approval of the minutes from the May 7 meeting?
Move.
I heard a motion. Is there a second? Hold on, if they were say aye?
Aye.
Okay. I heard a lot of ayes. Are there any nos? Okay, they will stand approved then. Under New Business Tonight, item 4.1 is to discuss and possibly take action on a rezoning request for 1801 and 1805 Nicholas Drive from RS 20 zoning to a CS zoning. Is there a motion to discuss?
So moved.
I think I heard a motion. Is there a second?
Was that Alan Powell?
Yes.
Who was the motion, Beth?
It was me, Gina.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and second, so we are on the floor. Uh, Dave, do you want to?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Allen. This agenda item is a application to rezone two lots in existing Moreland Estates, Section 8A subdivision. The, the two lots are addressed as 1801 and 1803 Nicholas Drive. The request has been to rezone these from the existing RS 20 zoning, which is a single-family residential zoning with a minimum of a 20,000 square foot lot to commercial services. Staff is not in favor of this rezoning. It goes against our land use plan, which that area is established to be residential. It, it, previously, there were restrictions on the two lots that expired five years ago, but the original restrictions were that these two lots be residential only. It's part of a residential subdivision. So, uh, that's most of the main reasons that we're against it. But we want to remind the planning commission that once property is rezoned, very specifically to CS, it, anything that is allowed by right or permitted by right, any use permitted by right, can be put on that property. And when you look at what's allowed in CS, and you look at the definitions, you go back into Chapter 3, and you look at all the definitions, there are 14 pages of allowed uses that can go in a CS zone. It can have residential uses. It can be multi-residential. It can be a hotel, apartment hotel, a boarding room, a residential hotel. Those are the residential activities that are allowed by right in that CS zoning classification. It also has community facility activities, uses by right. There are administrative, community assembly, community education, cultural and educational services, essential services, personal and group care facilities, religious facilities. Those are just all in the community facility activities. Within the commercial activities, there is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. 10 pages of allowed uses in a CS zone. Animal, it ranges from animal and veterinary services to roofing contractors is the last one. It's wholesale, vehicular craft and retail equipment sales, medical and professional services, group assemblies, general retail trade, general personal services, general business and communication services, food service, drive-in, food and beverage services, financial consulting and administrative services, entertainment and amusement services, convenience commercial, commercial repair services, building materials and farm equipment, and automotive repair services, automotive parking. And like I said, animal care and veterinary services. That, I, I, commission, I'm just gonna say, that is just way too much to be considered available. Once you rezon it, and it's sold to somebody, they can do anything they want with that. And, and it, like I said, it doesn't fit our land use plan. It's part of an existing residential subdivision, and the staff is not in favor of this rezoning. And that'll, that covers my end of it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I know we've had a lot of input. I've gotten calls from people that live in Moreland. How many texts did you wind up getting from residents of Moreland that were opposed to this?
We received 39 emails that were opposed to this, and we received easily twice that many telephone calls that were opposed to it. Of course, we never hear from anybody that's in favor of anything like this, but, with that said, 39 emails against and easily 80 phone calls against.
I do remember when Walmart was talking, planning on relocating down there, and this was an issue then, and extensive screening was required by Walmart to where you couldn't tell there was an actual building back there. And it's still an issue now, I guess. Are there any questions that planning commissioners would like to ask Dave or Renee Harrington? I don't see her on my screen.
I'll be right back, Mr. Chairman.
She's there.
I'm seeing. Who won't give you access? Did I not make?
No, you didn't make me access. Don't get mad at me.
I do see.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Wanda.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to vote on this item. Not hearing any discussion at all.
Okay.
I would like to.
Is there a second? Oh, Jeff? Jeff's got his hand up there.
Can you hear me?
Say again, Jeff. I can.
Say something before we vote on this.
Sure.
This is generally what you would refer to as spot zoning, when you move commercial into a residential area. We, as the city of Springfield, do not spot zone. You're going into a, one of, one of the nicest neighborhoods in Springfield, where most of us have been living all 25 to 30 years. It's a beautiful lot to put two houses. It's not a lot to put a business. If we allow spot zoning for her, we open the door for anyone who wants to spot zone. And that will certainly mess Springfield up.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Uh, on my screen now, I have a aerial photo of the area. And Jeff, that's all I have. Okay, we're, we're back in business here. I have a motion from Wanda Mason to vote on this item. Is there a second to vote on the item?
Second.
That was Tony Town.
Was that Tony?
Yeah, second.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And the, the motion did not have a positive or negative connotation to it. So if you vote yes, you would be in favor of the zoning. If you vote no, you would be opposed to the rezoning. Alright, we're ready to vote.
I'm gonna turn up my volume a minute, so I can hear everybody. Commissioner Powell.
No.
Commissioner Gregg.
No.
Commissioner Mason.
No.
Commissioner Hollinsworth. Commissioner Hollinsworth. Commissioner Allen.
No.
Commissioner Poole.
No.
Commissioner Townsend.
No.
I'm gonna go back one more time. Commissioner Hollinsworth?
No.
Okay, gotcha. Zero to seven. The motion fails.
Alright, item number 4.2 is to discuss and possibly take action on a rezoning request for the corner of Ruth Street and Golf Club Lane. That's from zoning R10 to MRO. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
So moved. I got both of you.
Okay, I heard two. So moved.
I got them.
Okay, what have we got on this one, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, this is a request from, uh, Joseph and Jacob Fan. This lot is at the corner of, um, Ruth Street and Golf Club Lane. It has, um, it's zoned RS 10. Back in 2000 and, um, well, not even 2000, back in 1997, the zoning ordinance allowed multiple residential in our zoning classifications. And at the time, the owners came with a six condominium proposal, and it got approved, the site plan got approved, and then nothing moved forward. Now, we're in a, what, the owner's widow wants to sell the property. Uh, the fans wanna buy it, and they want to do a little bit more with it than the six that have been previously approved. They may, they, they, they wanted to do condominiums, and they want to do them detached, similar to the condominiums that are being done in Village Green right now by Michael Hunsucker. Uh, there'll be two-story, and there will be up to 10 of them, nine or 10 of them. As you can see on the share screen, the, the lot to the west of it is zoned CS. It is a, owned by Mr. Moore, and it's a townhouse rental unit. This lot, like we said, previously approved for six condominiums. Uh, if it gets rezoned to MRO, it would allow up, they would only do up to 10, but it would be a nice transition from that commercial into this R10 zoning classification. Like I said, across from Ruth Street, there are 10 condom, well, there's more than 10. There'll be a total of 25 condominiums in Village Green. And then down to the east of this lot, there are an existing set of condominiums. So, um, we've been assured that these are all gonna be sellable units of, that will, uh, you know, promote homeownership within the city limits of Springfield. So, uh, anybody have any question concerning this application to rezone from R10 to MRO?
Okay, I'm not hearing any questions. I still have the aerial view on my screen. There we go. And the staff is in favor of this rezoning.
Staff will say they're, staff will say they're not opposed to the rezoning.
Not opposed, okay. I don't hear any questions or discussion. Is there a motion to vote on this item?
Motion. So, so moved. Second.
Okay, we have, have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Ms. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Gregg.
Yes.
Commissioner Townsend.
I like it, yes.
Commissioner Poole.
Yes.
Commissioner Powell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hollinsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Pass is seven to zero.
Alright, item number 4.3 under New Business is Hillcrest Block D subdivision plot.
Yes, Kimberly.
Is there a motion to discuss this?
I'm telling.
We got a motion to discuss this?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Alright, Dave, what have we got on this one?
Well, this one is a replat of a previously approved plat that you guys approved back towards the end of 2019, I think it was December. The only thing that has changed in this plat is, is that the 20-foot shared private sanitary sewer easement that is, that for lots, 15A, 15B, and 15C, was in the front, is now behind the homes. And staff is in favor of getting, approving this replat. It's, it's in their best interest. This way, they don't have to do any, uh, local sewer lift stations.
Okay, are there any questions for Dave or the staff on this item? I don't hear any questions or discussion. Is there a motion to approve this replat?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion.
I got them.
And I think I heard a second.
Yeah, Mr. Townsend did a second.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Commissioner Townsend.
Yes.
Commissioner Poole.
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Powell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hollinsworth. Commissioner. Commissioner Gregg.
Yes.
Commissioner Mason.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hollinsworth.
Yes.
Pass is seven to zero.
Alright, item number 4.4 is the Bellhaven subdivision replats. Is there a motion to discuss this item?
So moved.
I heard a motion. Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. What have we got on this one, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, this is a replat of the Bellhaven subdivision. It came in at the beginning of this year. It was originally a 30-lot subdivision on a cul-de-sac, which was the maximum allowable by our subdivision regulations. After it was approved contingent upon construction plan approval, it was learned that the electric line going down South Main Street was a 69 KV electric line, and had a 50-foot from centerline easement going across this property. And there was just no way they could get 30 lots and meet that existing easement setback. So they have dropped two lots and made the two lots that are closest to South Main Street bigger and have reduced the number of lots to 28 lots. And, uh, staff, staff has already approved the construction plans. And they also have, down in the bottom lower corner, they have a typical detail of how they are going to address their, um, their lots, their driveways on their lots. Alright.
Okay, are there any questions or discussions on this item? This is the one that, that we looked at and didn't like to start with, and the mayor and alderman passed, right, Dave?
Yes, that is correct. It is zoned RS 10. So it will be single-family residential homes on these lots.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Just one quick question. With the two houses that they're gonna take out of this, well, that, that's probably gonna expand the, people's yards, right?
Well, it will expand those two lots, Mr. Townsend. Those lots become bigger. The other lots have basically remained the same size.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hey, I can see you, Buzzy. I don't hear, I don't hear any other questions. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
On this one?
Second.
Okay, I heard a motion. I heard a second. We're ready to vote.
Commissioner Powell.
Yes.
Commissioner Mason.
Yes.
Commissioner Hollinsworth.
Yes.
Commissioner Townsend.
Yes.
Commissioner Poole.
Yes.
Commissioner Gregg.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Pass is seven to zero.
Uh, we do have an item under Old Business Tonight. It is 5.1 Autumn Wood Phase 2, a resolution for dedication and maintenance, and that's for $25,000. Is there a motion to discuss this?
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion. Is there a second? Motion and a second. What do we have on this, Dave?
Mr. Chairman, we have the Autumn Wood subdivision, Section 1 and Section 2. We have been working on this subdivision since, I'm gonna say, at least 2006. It seems like that anyway. But it's been at least, I'm gonna say 2006, 2008. It's now into its second owner, Darrell Adler, who has got a maintenance bond, I mean, a performance bond for Section 2 in place. He is wanting to finish off the, the infrastructure. He's pretty close. And, uh, get it, this resolution would allow us, the city, to accept the infrastructure and set the, accept the right of way and, uh, and put up a $25,000 maintenance bond for a year as required by our subdivision regulations for him to actually sell the last two lots. We've been holding those two lots due to a provision within our subdivision regulations, so. He's, uh, but it looks like he's actually gonna have it finished and able to take care of it by the 16th of this month.
Okay, are there any questions or discussions on this? I'm not hearing any. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
I heard a motion. Is there, and a second? Okay, we're ready to vote, Gina.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
It was Alan.
Okay. I didn't hear it. Thank you. Commissioner Townsend?
Yes.
Commissioner Poole?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hollinsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Mason?
Yes.
Commissioner Greg?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Pass is seven to zero.
Okay, the last item on our agenda tonight is a report about the BZA meeting. Are you handling that, Gina?
Yes, sir. Um, just so y'all know, Mistress Need, Henry Close Need, is requesting a variance to allow for a 12-by-24 carport to be constructed. It's at the corner of Kenny's Road and Fifth Avenue, sort of behind the, there's a house there closest to Kenny's Road, and he is wanting to put this carport there. So therefore, he needs to get a variance. I think it's approximately a five-foot variance. He was gonna get me the correct measurement, and he didn't have it to me by today. Then Helen Cotton requesting a variance to add an addition of 4,800 square feet between two existing warehouses at 2,500 South Main Street. And they are having to ask for the, because their lot coverage is already over what they're allowed for their zoning. So they are asking for that 4,800 square feet, and that's the reason why. And if any of the, if any commissioners have any thoughts on that, would you please email or let me know one way or the other?
Okay, is there anything else that we'd like to bring up tonight for discussion?
Gina, will that be, Gina, will that BZA meeting be at the center again?
Yes, sir. That's what we're planning on.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one last thing I'd like to talk with the planning commission about.
Okay.
Next month, we're shooting for backing the board, right? Yeah, I've enjoyed doing these Zoom meetings as much as the next person, but I'm looking forward to seeing y'all in the same room together. Hopefully, we'll be able to figure out a way to spread everybody out enough. We will be able to figure out a way. If we have to put tables in the center of the room so that y'all can sit six feet apart, that's what we'll do. But we're gonna have the meeting in person in July, which is July the 3rd. And I just wanted to say once again, we appreciate y'all's service to the city of Springfield. We wouldn't be able to perform nearly as well without such a great planning commission and working under these interesting provisions that we've had to work with during this pandemic. And I just want to say thank you so very much for all that you do for us. And with that said, Mr. Chairman, it's back to you. We can close this meeting out if you would like.
Okay, well, I'd like to say for everybody to stay healthy till next month, and we'll see you then. We'll stand adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bye-bye.
Goodbye.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Thank you, Gina. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
See you.